The other day.
Oh.
Hey Bob, your camera's off. I don't know if you want that on or not. Bob, your camera's off. I don't know if you want that on or not.
He's muted too.
Bob, your camera's off. I don't know if you want that on or not.
I was okay with that off Bob, but that's fine. Whatever you want to do.
I'm not commenting.
Okay. Terry's, Terry's moving. She's moving now. Okay. She was a frozen picture before. Okay. Okay. I see Connie on the phone, but uh. Where'd she go? Are we all set Connie? I noticed you on the phone. Just want to make sure everything's okay technically. Okay, I call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education in order. It is six o'clock. Please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. The United States of America.
Into the Republic which it stands.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Mr. Herman and Ms. McDonald are excused. We're going to begin with a moment of silence for the following. For George Carl, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. For Lynn Giddings, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Deborah Midgley, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Michael E. Schroeder, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kayla Shiley, attended schools in the North Syracuse Central School District. And Helen E. Nappa, attended schools in the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to begin. I guess we're starting with a presentation about presentations. That's the best I could come up with that when I read the A4 BPT presentation presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stone who can take us through that. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Farfalia. Let me share my screen here. Can everyone see where it says NSCSD Board of Education?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Alrighty. So I don't want to take up much time. I want to get right to those presentations, but what I wanted to do in this presentation The presentation for the presentation is just to kind of give you an overview of what you're going to be hearing from the elementary schools. We've been working on moving toward a little bit more consistent presentations for the board and for the community. And so I'd like to take the time to thank the board and community for the opportunity for us to present. My name is Greg Stone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Director of ELA Math and Elementary Education at North Syracuse. So as I just mentioned, my purpose in doing this initial presentation is to give you an overview of what you're going to be experiencing from the six elementary schools in terms of data, as well as consistency and building goals. So a big shift for us is really getting back to data-driven planning, interventions, and response. And I want to really point out to the board, when I say the word data, that does not mean we're testing students more on a sit-down test. It's just looking at all students as a whole, testing data, as well as our interactive data and everything else, you know, our regular interactions with students. But really looking at the whole student, every child, and making sure that we're meeting their needs, especially given the COVID situation. But also we need to do this on a yearly basis as well. Obviously, we're going to be talking tonight about a lot of those learning gaps that we knew were going to be coming and will probably continue to come over the next couple of years due to the pandemic and school closures and remote and everything else. So we'll talk about that tonight. We're going to be talking about what we're doing to intervene for students, how we're going to close those gaps, and then some of our overall goals for the buildings. I'm going to discuss a few of the limitations we currently have and some of the data that we're going to be going over. And then as well as some of the next steps for the district as we continue to move forward. Even given the current situation, we still need to be thinking forward and preparing for the future in order to make improvements for everything. So the point to this presentation and the ones you're going to be seeing in the next several weeks. Tonight, you've got, you've got Lake Shore Road Elementary and you've got Smith Road Elementary. And hopefully, we're going to see over this, this presentation in the next several years, it's really shifting our culture from one of a reactive culture to a proactive. Really looking at things from a global perspective, looking out three to five years at our long-term goals. How do we set goals? How do we achieve those goals over time? Ideally, so that we're shifting to a proactive culture. And what I mean is, we're looking at that data to determine where are the trends, where are students struggling, social, emotionally, or academically? What can we do to put in place to prevent that from happening versus continually reacting to it after the fact? And a lot of that is going to come to the different types of assessments we give in order to know where students are when they enter the door in the fall, so that we can plan for that versus waiting two months in to know where students are. So it's about prevention and being proactive. So this evening, you will not see really any data on kindergarten, and that really comes down to a couple of factors. Most being that this year, we shifted some of our assessments and we're only giving our kindergarten benchmark assessment. That's the only thing we gave in the fall, in the immediate fall. We did not do a kindergarten screening this school year, given all the chaos and everything else that we had. We also knew that this, this kindergarten benchmark that we give gives us some pretty significant data. Our kindergarten teachers know exactly where kids are. Here's some of the things you see in a kindergarten assessment is, we're looking at students, their name, can they print their name already? What colors and shapes can they ID? Reading readiness skills, some of the early numeracy skills. And then also some of the foundational skills. Can students already add and subtract? And I point this out for the board is just, just to kind of be aware of what our kindergarten teachers face. If you have a class of 20 students, you very well could have five students that are already readers that come into kindergarten knowing how to read simple text. You could have another 15 that don't even know letters or know some of their letters and some of their sounds or not any of them. So you already have a huge range in kindergarten, and I point that out just to let you know what our teachers face on a daily basis, whether it's a COVID year or a regular year. And so as we move forward with some of the assessments, you will see more of this data in the future. But for this year, we're going to be just focusing on grades one through four for the Board of Ed presentations. So what you're going to see in the presentations tonight for first grade is a comparison of last year's fall students to this year's fall students. So we're comparing two different groups of students. It's last year's first graders and this year's first graders. Our first graders for reading are assessed with what's called the foundational reading assessment, FRA. This is, you can see with this test, but it's looking at phonological awareness, letter name and sound, and letter word recognition. And a lot of these are predictors to how students are going to do in first grade. So what you're going to most likely, well, what you will see in this data is what we expect. There's going to be a significant gap this school year. More students needing more support in the fall due to that whole COVID situation back in the last spring. So our kindergartners last year are obviously going to be struggling more this year. And so the buildings are going to talk about what they're going to do to intervene and plan to close those gaps this year and next year. So second grade, the data you're going to see there again is going to be some, some graphs to compare the two, two years, the two cohorts. Last year's students and this year's second graders. The information you're going to see is a percentage of students that took the reading inventory. So remember, in first grade, they took the FRA, foundational reading assessment. Second grade, they're taking the reading inventory. You can see here that this test is looking at reading level, comprehension, and growth over time. It is, it is a predictor of how students are going to succeed in college and career. Even at second grade, it'll project out how that's going to, how the student is going to perform. So what you're seeing is the percentage of students last year versus this year. And again, you're going to see that where that gap is for our incoming fall students. All right. So this is where it gets a little bit sticky, and I wanted to walk through why, why we are where we are. So in third and fourth grade with reading, again, we administer that reading inventory that I just spoke about. But the only data you're going to see is fall of this school year. The reason is, the, the, the reading inventory is what we call a universal screener. So all these tests that we give, we give to all students in kindergarten through 12th grade. Reading inventory goes K-12. The reality is, the reading inventory is not designed to be a true universal screener like we're using it. It's the tool we currently have in the district, but it's not really designed to be a universal screener for all students. You can use it that way, but you'll see in the data, it's really hard to pull the data to really compare year to year, cohort to cohort. It's just not designed to do that. This is something we've been aware of, and hence why we're piloting universal screening tools to replace this tool for next school year. It's still good data. It's just not giving us what we need as a system, and so I'll be talking to the board more about that later in the school year. But that's why you're seeing only this school year's data. It's really hard in the system to pull last year's students out. It's just not designed for that, but you will see where those gaps are. In math, similar situation to reading, you're going to see only this fall's students. But you can see, we give them the math inventory in third and fourth grade. It's assessing, it's adaptive for K-12. It is assessing the math level ability, especially early numeracy, all the way through intermediate concepts and growth over time. So I know I just threw a lot at you guys, but now, when you go through the Board of Ed presentations from the buildings, you don't have to sit through this explanation every single time. You've kind of gotten an overview. I open it up to, do you have any questions for me or comments? And then after that, I will turn it over to Tina and Lindsay to do their building presentations.
Yeah, I have three questions.
I knew.
First of all, of course I would. Are these tests different than what we gave last year?
No, we've been giving all of these for the past five or six years.
Okay. My other question is, I, I'm impressed that you're taking 2019 with 2020, but what I would like to see is the students that were in first grade last year and what they're doing in second grade. I mean, you've got, you're going to have the results, but you're comparing, you're, you're comparing two classes.
Right.
And I'd rather follow a class to see if they've improved. You know, your 2019 class is not going to be the same as your 2020.
Absolutely.
And then my third question is, were the children that are doing complete virtual 30% tested?
So the complete virtual is yes. We did, we've got almost all of them tested. So we've got very similar amounts. It's probably not at 100%, but it's very close for all. But going back to your question number two, Bob, this is exactly why we need to adopt an appropriate universal screening tool. It's really challenging with these tools to pull that historical data and look at students across time. Because what it does is it assigns the students to the new teacher, and it's not like a system where you can go in and regenerate reports and pull kids over time. It's just not designed that way. So to your point, 100% agree, and in the future, with that new tool, with the new testing data, you will see data over time following cohorts of students and not comparing against different schools.
And if you, and, and if you had had the grade three through eight test, you could compare third and fourth grade. Unfortunately, we didn't have it last year, so you can't make, you can't make comparisons. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it.
No problem. Any other questions?
No, I just have a comment. I want to thank you for doing that because now that's connected dots in my head as to what I was looking at. When I looked at your presentation, it's not quite the same as having you go through it and tell me why we have it there. So thank you. That helps a lot in what we're going to see.
Yep, that was the hope. Okay, then I will stop sharing, and I'm going to turn it over. Are we, Paul, are we moving over to Tina? Lake Shore.
All right. There we are.
And I will share my screen. Are we all set?
Yep.
All right. So thank you. I am Tina Shimaleski. I am the principal at Lake Shore Road Elementary. And presenting with me today is Jennifer Dorsal. She is an administrative intern and academic intervention teacher with us this year. All right, brief overview of Lake Shore Road. We have 672 students, 492 are hybrid, 180 remote students, 82 staff members, and 34% free and reduced lunches. Our Lake Shore Road students are in 42 classrooms across the district. And we have adopted this year 17 Bear Road staff members and around 200 additional students this year. Greg already touched upon our kindergarten assessment. I had that in my presentation before, so I just kept that in. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jen, who will tell you about our building data.
All right. This is our foundational reading assessment for first grade that looks at the rhyming, the phonemic awareness, and letter ID. Looking at the graph, you can see that we have students entering first grade much lower than we have in the past. Our first graders are coming in with kindergarten-level skills. We currently have 24 first graders receiving AIS support four times a week. At the end of this presentation, we will discuss what we are doing as a building to meet all of our students' needs. All right, in second grade, we looked at the reading inventory. We used where students were in the winter to determine who was ready for this assessment. We were able to administer the RI to a larger percent of students based on where they were before closure. However, due to the closure in March, many of the students fell behind, which led to a higher percentage of students falling into the red, below basic range. We have 19 students receiving AIS support in second grade, and they're receiving it four times a week. In third grade, we also looked at the reading inventory results. For this assessment, it pulled the Bear Road students as well as the Lake Shore population. Therefore, a consistent comparison of data for the cohort. This data shows that students maintained where they were prior to the shutdown. Once students have those foundational reading skills, they typically do not lose it. We have 27 third graders receiving AIS support four times a week, plus the System 44 software three times a week. Moving into fourth grade, again, we're looking at our reading inventory data, which shows 50% of our population is in need of an intervention. 22 of those students are receiving AIS support. And then looking at our math inventory for third grade, this is an adaptive research-based assessment that's focusing on number ID and fact fluency. Our scores show that our gap has increased from last year. Number sense is embedded into every math lesson through number talks in Tier One and in Tier Two. 15 of our students are receiving AIS support, working on that number sense and fact fluency. Then in fourth grade, our math data looks very similar to the third grade just shown. We have a Tier One math program with common assessments in place. We're hoping to see a significant shift in those math scores. Early intervention for math is beginning to be discussed within the district.
Good.
We also have our instructional coach, John Wojcik, who is working with all of our PLCs to dive deeply into the components of into math and how it supports students who are struggling and how to differentiate. 16 of our fourth grade students are receiving AIS support in math. Now I'll turn it over to Tina to share our BYMAS results.
All right. So BYMAS is our behavior intervention monitoring system, and this was our first year that we use this benchmarking protocol at Lake Shore Road. As you can see, a lot of these triangles are very typical. Our fourth triangle, however, does have 27% in the red, which shows us students as having a social concern. This, of course, is hard to assess when we only have students in person two days a week and a number of students that are remote. Also, looking at COVID protocols, there's not, it's, it's very difficult for students to socialize as they have in the past. And so when teachers have to give students a score, it's just a hard thing for us to gauge. But it's also why we have made this one of our building focuses this year. All right. I'm going to jump into our goals and strategies. So we realize the importance of being in a healthy state of mind to prepare the body for learning, which is why we are looking at social, emotional learning. And these are just a number of strategies that we have started at Lake Shore. COM Connect is a program that really focuses the brain meditation process, and it's just a quick little exercise that gets students ready for learning. A lot of times, I put these into our morning announcements. Teachers have access and they'll put in little brain breaks throughout the day. And it really does help in some of our kindergarten classrooms when we're having students sit for long periods of time. It gets them up and moving without getting their body out of control. We also have STAR meetings that we are doing, and those are meetings with administration and our social workers and psychologists, where we really look at our students that are struggling emotionally. And something new, our school psychologist created a counseling suite. And here's what it looks like. She updates this monthly, and it's a great resource for our families, students, and teachers, and it's an interactive site. Students can hop on, they can access exercises, stories, or positivity projects. Just a great tool for our students and families to have access to. All right, curriculum, of course, another focus for us. So really focusing on the priority standards with our team meetings that are held. Our teachers have 90 minutes of team time where they are really looking at the curriculum, prioritizing, and looking at our student data that we have gathered. We encourage our teachers to share the workload. We have instructional support meetings that occur weekly, and that is where a teacher can bring up a student that they have academic or behavior concerns. And we need to set up progress monitoring for that child or interventions that are needed for students that are not showing growth. Our AIS team has also embedded some learning sessions into our staff meetings. We also have weekly letters training where teachers volunteered to learn for one hour a week about how students learn how to read. All right, engagement is another area that we have decided to focus on for this year. So on good days, we do get students outside as much as possible. When we were closed in the spring, I posted videos for my students every day. I took them on a virtual spring break. I had a virtual tea party just to find ways to connect with them when they were at home. Just really finding ways to think outside the box. I started a principal's council before school started to merge the Bear Road and student populations together. And just a quick little video celebration here to kind of give you a peek inside Lake Shore. And so our biggest challenge really is closing the achievement gap while minding the mental health, as you saw, looking at our data. Very hard to just jump right into things if we don't know our students and we don't have those relationships built. So that really is a huge focus for us and just trying to embed instructional techniques into our staff meetings and improve Tier One instruction. All right, that concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time. These are our Lake Shore Road BPT members, and I will open it up to any questions.
I just have one quick, just for clarification from my part. On your, on your last, you go to your last pie graph. I can't, I don't, there wasn't a slide number, but the last pie graph you had, it was mentioned that right there, 16 students were receiving AIS. How many students need AIS in this pie graph, I guess is my question.
There is a large number of students that would need AIS support. We have an additional AIS provider this year, based on the number of students we have coming over from Bear Road. So we gained a third AIS teacher, and even with that, three teachers, we are servicing many more students. But also with the COVID restrictions of having group sizes of no larger than three, that is also causing us not to be able to take as large a group as we have in the past. Therefore, we are also utilizing virtual instructions so we can make our groups larger.
Okay, thank you. That explains, so that explains the numbers. As you went through each slide, you mentioned the number that received AIS, and it seemed alarming that there are so many more that needed it, but I understand this now. Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just a comment and a couple of questions. I, I want to thank Tina and Jennifer. This has been an unusual year with COVID, but also having the Bear Road students and staff, I've heard nothing but positive things. So your leadership has made a difference in having the students be relaxed in their new school. I mean, it's different. These were second graders and third graders coming to your school, and I want to thank your staff and yourself for what you have done. One question I had, I liked what you said, I think it was Jennifer, about early intervention in math. This has been talked about North Syracuse for years, and at one time, I was an AIS math person, and we never went below third grade. We need to start thinking in this district about starting early like we do in reading, so I'm glad you mentioned that. The other concern I have, or concern I have is, and you showed it in your videos, you don't have to answer it, how a classroom is so different from what it was a year ago at this time. The desks are separated. It looks to me, I could be wrong, but kids can't work together. In my classroom, it was 24/7, kids working together. They didn't do as much independent work. I know the teachers are doing a great job, and I understand with COVID, but it's a shame that a lot of things can't be done in a classroom now because of COVID, and it has to do with COVID. But I, I give the teachers a lot of credit. The other thing is, and I know, I'm looking at Terry right now, and I know she's interested in this, is the BEMAS, which deals with mental health and so forth, and I'm hearing a lot of this in BOSIs with other school districts. I'd ask maybe Dan, or not Dan, but whoever it would be to come and do a presentation on this. What does the test look like? What are, what are some of the individual things? And I think Terry would like to probably see that, about how you're testing these kids in this area. That's it.
Along those lines, Bob, exactly what my focus is on is, are the kids, we need to be, I think, even more diligent about noticing the smaller signs of kids struggling because they're not speaking up. And I don't know, it sounds like you're a group that is actually looking at the kids a little bit deeper, really analyzing them a little bit more to ask the question, are you okay? And I see nodding heads, so it's wonderful to hear. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I, welcome, welcome, Mr. Herman. I see you solve the tech issues. He was trying to get in. Yeah. All right. So we will go right to Smith Road and Ms. Maloney.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come and present tonight. I am Lindsay Maloney. I am the building principal here at Smith Road, and I also have, I'll let Michelle introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Michelle Henderson. I'm an academic intervention teacher in, at Smith Road and also co-chair of the building planning team.
So we are going to follow similar as Lake Shore. I'm going to start off with just giving you an overview of what it looks like at Smith Road this year. We currently have about 608 students, 425 of them are hybrid, and about 159 are remote at this time. We have 88 staff that are connected to the building, that are in the building on a daily basis. We have 22 hybrid classrooms, and of those 22, seven of them are CTD classrooms. We have 16 remote teachers, so 16 additional teachers that are connected to Smith Road servicing our Smith Road remote students. We also have here the three special education 15-to-1 classrooms. So we have two early primary classrooms and one upper primary, and these students do attend five days a week. We have about 24 students in that program. We also were fortunate enough this year to welcome the ENL program to Smith Road from Allen Road. So we currently have 61 English language learners here at Smith Road this year, and we are about 50% free and reduced, and we are a Title I building. I always, we always here at Smith Road start off with our mission and vision, just because this really centers us. Our mission is our purpose, and this defines where we're going, and it's used, you know, to drive all of our decisions here at Smith Road. Same with our vision. So this is year two of our new vision at Smith Road. And like I said, this is kind of where we want to be in three to five years, and every time we come back and we take a look at, at our building goals, it's, it's really always centered around our vision. So before we jump into our building data, I just wanted to put So before we jump into our building data, I just wanted to put, I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, this is kind of, we are using the green, yellow, red model to kind of communicate our data. And, you know, in the perfect world, if, if we were doing everything we needed to be doing, then we typically should see about 80% of our students in the green, so responding to that tier one core curriculum, you know, tier one instruction. 15% or less in the yellow with that tier two intervention, and then 3 to 5% receiving that tier three. And you'll see, when you look at our data, we have some things to celebrate, and we definitely recognize that we, we do have areas of growth. So I am going to turn it over to Michelle to go over our building data.
Okay, so this is our first grade students and how they performed on the foundational reading assessment. There's a lot of red, and we recognize that, and we are implementing several programs in our building in order to minimize the red. But one thing that we do notice between these two cohorts of students is we did not see a dramatic change with the COVID closure with our first grade results. We'll see, it looks a little bit different with our second graders, but our first graders seem to be holding steady, unfortunately, with 50% in our below basic level. We, our first grade team and our kindergarten team have been implementing a Hegarty Phinimic Awareness Program for the past two years that teaches beginning basic foundational reading skills. We are also, we have several teachers in the, in the building piloting some phonics programs that the district is looking at adopting to support the beginning reading instruction as well. Our second grade, we looked at it a little bit differently. We wanted to show the comparison from last year to this year, so we think this bar graph shows a pretty stark difference. This is where we see the biggest impact from our COVID closure. Typically, we have many of our students at the end of first grade test out of the foundational reading assessment. Because we were not able to administer that this year, we had quite a few second graders that still needed to take the foundational reading assessment, which is, that's what this graph is showing, that these are the students who qualified to take the next, next test up the reading inventory. In 2019, we had almost 80% of our second graders taking the reading inventory in the fall, and here in 2020, it's a much lower number of the students who qualified for that assessment. But again, our teams are working very closely together to try and close this gap for all of our students. They are, again, working on that Hegarty program, our phonics pilots. We have kindergarten team that is, they work on the FOMC and now phonics in kindergarten along with those other phonics pilots. These are our third and fourth grade reading inventory results. We have, it looks pretty good by the time we get to fourth grade, as you can see in the fall, where our green is definitely growing. We are catching up to that 80% of that triangle that we, that Lindsay spoke of. These teams work very closely together. They look at essential standards as a grade level. They look at the proficiency, proficiency learning targets for those standards, and they look at developing common understanding and rigor and evidence of learning. The teams meet weekly. They look at their mapping and pacing guides that dictate what they should be teaching. They discuss together as a group what the end result of those standards should be and what that should look like with the evidence of learning from our students. And they plan that out together. Our teams work very closely together, and we do see that they are, we're starting to make some improvement by the time our students get to fourth grade. Math looks a little bit different. As you can see, our third grade math is, we have 50% or more of our students below basic in that red tri, in that red area of the triangle. We're in year two of our new math program, Into Math. The teachers are, again, working closely together to develop their common understanding of the program. They're using the district to find must-dos parts of the program and following this program with fidelity. And we are hopeful that we will start to see the proficiency levels of our students increase the more that we use this program with fidelity in our building. We have common assessments with this program that support all of the data and help with the dialogue within teams. You'll see when we present our building goals that they align very closely to all of the proficiency levels of our, of what our data is showing.
So then the last piece of data that we want to present is the BIMAS universal screener, just like Tina had spoke about. We are in year three of using the BIMAS screener, and we really focus on looking at the whole child. So we're looking at the academic, and we're also looking at the behavioral, social, emotional piece. This, this actually new in the program. They've allowed us to pull data that aligns with the five core competencies of the social emotional competencies through CASL. So we're really looking at this data and recognizing, you know, here at Smith Road, we need to focus on those self-management and relationship skills. Those are our priorities, and we're figuring out ways that we can incorporate this skill building in our tier one instruction throughout the day. So it's, we're trying to look at it not as a separate piece. We do have the second step program here, but we're looking, finding ways, how can we weave that into our content as we're teaching throughout the day? So this, this screener has been really beneficial for us. It's helping us as far as the tier two and tier three level with our counseling department. So we're really taking a deep dive into this data this year. Our building goals this year, as I said, they align with our vision. We've taken a look at the data, the social, emotional, the academic. One of, one of our challenges and one of the things we're working on is attendance and disengagement. This year, you know, we continue to focus on that chronic absenteeism, but this year, more than anything, it's that disengagement piece. When our students are at home learning, you know, on their asynchronous days, or our remote students, how are we engaging the students to keep moving forward in the curriculum? We have, we are following the district, the district-wide disengagement protocol, which we have found great success. We start at that tier one level, teachers reaching out to families, building that relationship, offering support. It has worked its way up to the tier two level at the counseling department, and then to myself as well. But our approach is, it's a collaborative approach. We're supporting the families. It's not a disciplinary approach where we're, you know, calling families and getting upset. It's, it's a collaborative approach, and how can we work together to keep the students engaged? The second thing that we're working on this year is collaborative teacher time. Smith Road, we've always, we have always had really strong PLCs in the building, and this year, we're defining it as collaborative teacher, teacher time, because that 90 minutes that we have on Wednesdays is really about coming together, sharing ideas, sharing resources. We know teachers have a lot on their plate, so we've really, the teams have developed a sense of trust, and they're, they're working together to share that workload. At the same time, recognizing that we do have a gap, we are taking the time to look at the, the mapping and the pacing guides, to stay on pace with the remote teachers. We're looking at the essential standards. We're prioritizing what are the absolute essentials for this year? What do we need them to be proficient in when they walk out the door to that next grade level? So that's a big focus for us this year as well. Michelle?
So our data awareness surrounds mostly the BIMAS data at this point. We are working with Kim Mackey from BOSI's to develop a data protocol, and the BIMAS data is, it's very clear, and there's a lot of different pieces to it, and there's a lot of really very useful information that we can get out of it. So we're working with Kim as a place to start to develop that data protocol, and we're hoping that in time, we can use that same protocol to look at other pieces of data as we adopt a new universal screener, as we dive more deeply into our math program and the common assessments that are there. We can use the same protocol with any assessment that we are given, even to include the state test data, so that our teams feel comfortable looking at data and have a process that they can follow when they are looking at it. Our multi-tiered systems of support is looking at the whole child. In the past, we focused mostly on the academic side of the children and what we can do to support them, place them in AIS or whatever other interventions we have available for those children. But a multi-tiered system of support also brings in the behavior and the social, emotional learning of the children. All of those pieces are connected to why a child might be struggling with something at school. So we are working on creating pieces that we can use when we meet in our school support team to discuss all parts of what's going on with this child. We look at their attendance record. We look at BIMAs. We look at their academic assessments. And we're using our second step program to support the social, emotional needs to try and prevent, as Greg mentioned, to, to create the prevention piece instead of constantly trying to just put Band-Aids on situations. We, we're really working hard to try and prevent some things from happening right from the beginning. We have a lot to celebrate at Smith Road. Our biggest success is the way that our building planning team pulled together. Over the summer, we met several times to rethink school in 2021. We had to rethink everything from student arrival to student dismissal, to lunches, recess, walking in the hall, specials. Everything had to be rethought, and our team came together. We thought about all the pieces we could, and because of that, we had a very smooth reopening of our building. Everything went according to plan, if, believe it or not. We really didn't run into any glitches. We're really proud of ourselves and excited about that. We also were able to have our annual PTO fundraiser walkathon, and added into that this year, we allowed the children to wear the Halloween costumes in an effort to make as much fun and normalcy as we could for the students. It was a piece that wasn't affected by any COVID regulations, and it was something we could do to put some smiles on kids' faces.
And then lastly, I think one of the biggest things is, sometimes challenges make us, they force us to think outside the box. We were all, you know, we had to figure this stuff out, and with that, we've changed, we've changed some processes and procedures in the building, which are going to have long-term effects. I mean, there's things that we have changed that, that will continue. For example, grouping. In the spring, grouping students, we, we had to go digital. It forced us to go digital. We had talked about it for years. It forced us to do that, and now that process is a lot more streamlined, a lot more effective now that we have gone digital. So it's, you know, it's something that we'll continue with even when we go back to the normal pool. So it, we have all pulled together, families, students, and staff, to really think outside the box and problem solve, instead of sitting there and admiring problems. We really pulled together. The other thing is really, it's forced us to rethink family engagement. We're doing a lot of things to pull families in. We can't get them in the buildings, but we've got some great ideas as far as Screencast Fides to support families at home on how to manage the platforms that they're learning on, to how to motivate their students at home, really providing that support to families, and also that fun engagement piece for the students to get them engaged with the at-home learning. So thinking of different ideas, mystery readers and, and all those things to get people engaged. And so lastly, as we close, I just wanted to say that, as I mentioned before, I couldn't be more proud of the student, staff, and families here. We really have pulled together and made this the best that we can, and it's, it's been a very successful reopening, and I'm extremely grateful to be working alongside everybody in, in the Smith Road community. So with that, these are our BPT members who work very, very hard, so I thank them and appreciate everything they do, and I'd like to open it up to questions and comments. And I'm sorry, we tried to do 10 minutes, but gosh, that's hard.
Do you have any questions? I don't see any, so I thank you very much.
And Paul, this is Mary. I don't have any questions, but just for both presentations, I just want to congratulate you on, you know, giving such a great presentation, and thank you all for what you're doing for our students and for our families and for our staff. We know this isn't easy, and it's, you know, had, you had to go back to basics and rethink things, and, you know, we're very proud of you as well, and we want to thank you, and we appreciate all that you're doing. Dan, you must be very happy with what you're seeing tonight.
Like we've said, we have rock stars, and there, and there are people all over doing amazing work, and this is the opportunity for them to show you the hard work behind the scenes. Our teachers, our, our administrators, all the way down to our, our school nurses, our bus drivers, everyone is really pulling together to make this work and work well. So again, you're, you're seeing firsthand some of the collaboration and, and things that are happening behind the scenes.
Right, and we're not through it, and I'm sure, you know, six months from now, a year from now, there's going to be issues that we have to deal with. I mean, you know, just keeping the focus on the kids and trying to keep them engaged. I know that is what I'm hearing is the biggest challenge, and parents on how to help their kids, that's a huge challenge. Parents are not trained to teach and keep their kids motivated. So, you know, I appreciate all the creative ideas you're coming up with, and you're not giving up, so we love that. And we, we realize what you're going through, and, you know, the struggles that you're facing, and we're very proud of everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your support as well.
Yes, definitely.
You're welcome.
Great.
We do have rock stars.
Okay, we're gonna move into Board of Education Committee reports now. Did, did you want to add anything, Mrs. Scanlon, on committee reports?
I'm just, we, our next meeting is next week on December 15th for the Policy Committee.
Okay, thank you. And Legislative Committee. Bob, did you want me to make some comments, and then you could make comments about where you're going?
Yeah, go ahead. I appreciate it.
Mr. Crabtree asked me, I had to substitute as chair of the committee in Bob's absence last time, and I did the best I could, but I could not rise to the level of Bob's enthusiasm with the committee. But I thought we had a good meeting. It was just short of an hour. We did discuss where we'd be, what, what kind of thoughts the committee had as to what direction we wanted to go, especially with the upcoming meeting on the 16th of December. And obviously, with the, I don't even want to put a number on it, but with the looming state aid reductions that we still have floating over our heads, it's a dark cloud. I mean, the committee was in consensus that we wanted to see our local representatives on the meeting that we're having on December 16th. We also did talk a lot about the federal piece, because that, that is a significant, obviously, very significant piece. At the time of the meeting, we were not clear as to what we have for congressional representation in the 24th congressional district where we reside, but we now have Mr. Catco again. But I do know, all I know is what everybody else probably knows from the news, that they're, they're kicking around, and they keep saying they're close to a federal COVID relief package somewhere north of $900 billion, that is where they were today. What's in there, it's not known. What's not in there, I've heard a lot about, but hopefully there's something there for education and healthcare. But there remains to be seen. Ms. Gibson from the meeting did add- Ms. Gibson from the meeting did add contact information for the pertinent players at the federal level. So if you'd like, uh, you can contact Mr. McConnell, that that would be the Senate Majority Leader, who I actually, for the fun of it, called the phone number today, but, uh, it might surprise you, but you actually, you don't get Mitch on the line. I'll let you know that now. Matter of fact, you don't get anybody on the line and you don't even get an answering machine. You get referred to the website where you can write him, uh, an email. But we do have, uh, his contact information, Kevin McCarthy, Nancy Pelosi, and of course, uh, Mr. Schumer, Senator Schumer and Gillibrand. So there was a, a discussion on an effort to have contacts made to start getting information out about that. And, uh, I guess I'm going on and I'm looking at my notes here. I probably should stop, but, uh, another couple of important things. And, and Mr. Keegan did, it did discuss with us the amount of money we have, uh, spent on compliance items for COVID. You know, this is money that wasn't budgeted for. And, and these are the kinds of things we want to let our legislators know about at the federal level and at the local level. So I'll, I'll cut it short because we'll have another meeting soon. But I, I thought it was a good meeting. I would have been better with Bob and it will be better in the future because Bob will be there. And Bob, if you want to discuss what you mentioned to me today, you've already contacted some of our, uh, local state legislators for the meeting, uh, the Zoom meeting next week.
Paul, you did an awesome job. I'm, uh, and I want to thank Connie Gibson for the notes, um, because, uh, it helped me out a lot. But we've contacted, um, our four, four, four state representatives, Pam Hunter and Al Sturper, our Assemblymen, and Rachel May, and now our new, finally, it's been a year that we've not had a Senator, John Mannion. So hopefully the four of them will, um, by Zoom will join us and, uh, we'll talk about things you just talked about. That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Bob, uh, the OCM Bosse's report, you'd like to discuss?
I, I, again, I, I want to thank Connie because she gave you not only, uh, my report, but she gave you the, uh, minutes. We were able to get the minutes ahead of time. Are there any questions? Cause I have no comments. Any questions? Okay.
I don't have any questions, but I did want to mention, uh, the communication I received from OCM Bosse's, just so the boards are aware. As, as we all know, and Bob did, uh, mention to us at a previous board meeting of the loss of, uh, Ann Wright, left a vacancy, uh, on the OCM Bosse's board. Basically, there's been an agreement, they call it gentleman's agreement, where the next district in rotation was Fayetteville Manlius. So the board, uh, is appointing or has appointed Bob, I'm assuming.
Well, we're gonna vote Thursday, we're gonna vote Thursday on it.
Okay. Ms. Marissa Mims, who is from, uh, as I just mentioned, the Fayetteville Manlius School Board. She's, uh, been on the school board since two thousand and nine. She's a technology teacher at Roberts Middle School in the city of Syracuse and currently serves as a Board President in Fayetteville Manlius. So, uh, we were just being informed of that. And if we had any concerns or comments, I was going to forward those to the OCM Bosse's. But I, I personally didn't have any, but I wanted to inform the board of that. If there's any comments or questions, be a good time now. Okay. Seeing none, Superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
First is that I want to just remind everyone that we have acquired five more of our eleven schools in the yellow zone. And the testing from the county, we will start tomorrow for two of those schools. That will be Smith Road Elementary and Gillette Road. On the tenth, which is Thursday, we'll have Lake Shore and Cicero start the testing from the county. And then also the high school will have two days because of their size. They'll start the morning of the tenth and then also the morning of the eleventh for the asymptomatic testing of our students. And again, the last time we did this of, for six schools, we ended up having just one positive that came a six. I do want to remind the board that we are having a little bit of a, a sub-s shortage as it continues to be a problem. There are times where we're not having people respond to sub-request due to COVID. And, uh, right now in some of our buildings, uh, we are having just not positions that are, uh, filled when someone is out. We're averaging two to three at least in every building a day. We spend a lot of time now with contact tracing. I guess on Saturday, I think we hit the highest amount in the county of people that tested positive with three hundred and fifty-six. So on the weekends, uh, we do have, uh, things being sent to us from the Department of Health. We have our administrators, uh, getting on some things for contact tracing. And, uh, I'm assuming that between now and Christmas, based on the governor's report due to Thanksgiving and some of the holidays, uh, we'll be doing more of that. I do want to just remind people, if they didn't see what Connie sent out, we were highlighted in a magazine for, uh, some of our social emotional learning. I want to congratulate, uh, the work that the group is doing and Lisa Goldberg. But, uh, again, we were a suburb district that was highlighted in, uh, Behavioral Magazine. I think the town of Webb was another rural school in New York City for the work that we're doing to meet the needs of our students. And I think that would be it for Superintendent's comments right now. But, uh, again, um, we closed out the sign up for Smith Road and Gillette at four o'clock. The closeout for Lake Shore, Cicero and CNS will be four o'clock Wednesday for a Thursday testing. It closes out, uh, the day before.
Okay, thank you. Board of Education comments, comments, concerns? Anybody? Okay, then I will move on to routine action items. Okay, looking for a motion for a consideration of approval of the minutes of the board of meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion on those minutes? Hey, seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried.
Uh, I abstain, uh, because I was not present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Ms. Gibson's got that. Okay, great. Okay, if I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to combine items B, C and D. If I can get a second for that, second from Ms. Kruger. And these are the placements of the disabled students for the Committee of Special Ed, for the preschool special ed and for the home instruction review many placements. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. And I'll make a motion, uh, can I get a motion for item E? Acknowledgement of Business Office reports for October twenty twenty. Motion for Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Okay, discussion action items. I'll ask for a motion for the acceptance of the eternal, internal audit report from May twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. A motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion or questions on that report? You should have read the details on that in the Friday letter. And the Audit Committee did receive that and everybody was okay with bringing it to the board today. Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. And a motion, please, to approve the corrective, corrective action plan required by the Office of the State Comptroller in regards to that report. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion there? And then again, this reference in the Friday letter. All in favor? Posed, that is carried. And I will do item C, if I can get a motion for C to abolish the one point zero FTE Junior Systems Administrator. Motion for Mr. Thorne, second for Mr. Marizio. And we've discussed that. So if there are any questions, seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. And item D, if I get a motion also, please. Motion from second from, uh, Ms. Kruger, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Posed, that is carried. As you can see, we have item E. I apologize for the being, if I knew myself, I can't talk. Seven o'clock, there's only gonna be seven of those. Item E of motion to accept the Teamsters Local Three Seventeen and North Circus Center School District contract ratification. Motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor? Posed, and that is carried, thank you. And a motion for F, please. This is the Food Service Division, Local Two Hundred United Service Employees International Union Contract. Mr. Thorne makes a motion, second from Ms. Scanlon. This one is new, this has come in recently. I congratulate you guys on bringing that to us. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Motion for G, please, impartial hearing, uh, settlement resolution. Motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. Kruger. And again, that was discussed in the Friday letter. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. H, acknowledgement of gifts. Motion for that, please. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Herman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, and that is carried. And I, surplus of non-marketable goods, a motion for that. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Kruger. Any questions? We have some Chromebooks, some iPads, some Airpads, stuff like that, that is not marketable. Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Posed, and is also carried. Structure report, A, personnel report, A, motion, please, and bring that before us. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Harrington, any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. Motion for support staff personnel report B, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried. And administrative report C, please. Motion to bring that before us. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Harrington, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, and that is carried. Okay, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of hearing a parental appeal of the Superintendent's decision and to review one legal matter with action to follow on the parental appeal of the Superintendent's decision. If I can get a second for that. Second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Posed, that is carried, we'll move into executive session. This time, Ms. Gibson, do we need to adjourn? Or we just, okay, motion, uh, then to adjourn the meeting. Motion for Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Scanlon. No discussion, all in favor? Posed, we are adjourned.